Thank you all for allowing me to come before you this evening to have your review and hopefully approve a resolution for us to apply for capital and operating administrative grant funding from the state of North Carolina for FY19. The request before you, we are requesting a total project for administrative for $234,002 with a local share being $35,101 which represents 15% of the total. Capital, which is vehicles and other capital expenses totaling $220,970 with a 10% local share of $22,097 for a total project for FY19 totaling $454,972 with a combined local share of $57,198. Again, this would be for administrative funding and for capital expenses. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about the details of the respective projects.
Does anyone have questions of Candace? I do have one, Candace. Where it shows replacing four vehicles, shows three LTVs. Is that light terrain vehicles, is that what that means?
Light transit vehicles, yes, sir.
It's what?
Light transit vehicles, yes.
Light transit vehicles, which would be...
They are the larger vehicles you see. We're requesting 20-foot replacement vehicles with equipped with the handicap lift. The useful life of those vehicles is 145,000 miles. Vans, they recommend replacement at 115,000 miles. Current fiscal year FY18, we had no vehicles that were requested. Under the old formula, you had, we as a system had to meet the useful mileage or useful years by October 1st of the year prior to. This year, we did not meet any of those benchmarks. And in the, with the new formula, they are accelerating the replacement schedule a little bit, and so we would now have to meet the life expectancy by June 30th of the following year. So, we were actually eligible to replace up to five based on expected use. But after consulting with the county manager, we realized that it may be a hardship for the taxpayers to go from zero vehicles one year to five, so we are slowing that down a bit and pulling that request back a little bit. So, rather than replacing or requesting replacement for the five that were eligible to replace, we're requesting replacement for four instead. And so, those would be three LTVs and one minivan.
Thank you. Any other questions? No other questions, we need to hold a public hearing.
Yes, sir.
So, I'll declare that we are opening the public hearing for this community transportation program. Is there anyone here to speak for the program? Seeing nor hearing anyone, no one coming forward, is there anyone here to speak against the program? Don't leave anybody's here for or against, so I'm gonna declare the public hearing closed. There's a resolution that everyone's been given. What would the board like to do?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Move to approve the motion, or approve the resolution as presented.
Okay. Commissioner Swain made the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner allowed a second. Any other discussion? Let's vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, 7-0.
Thank you.
Item number two is the Monarch 2018-19 North Carolina Department of Transportation Consolidated Capital Project Grant, and presenter is Lori Weaver with Monarch.
Hello. Thank you all for a few minutes this evening, I appreciate it. As we do every year at this time, Monarch is submitting an application to the Department of Transportation for consolidated capital funding to support transportation for the individuals that we support with intellectual and developmental disabilities across North Carolina, to and from our day programs, which are similar to the program at SIS here in Stanley County. These programs for us serve about 600 people across the state, 50 of those here in Stanley County, and so this funding allows us to contract with local transportation, public transportation providers like SCUSA to provide transportation to meet the unmet needs of those individuals to get to and from those day programs as they need to for education support, skill building, development, recreational activity, community engagement activities, volunteer activities. So, that's the programs provide those services for those folks throughout the year, and this money helps get them to and from those programs.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions, Ms. Weaver? I do need to hold a public hearing, so I will declare a public hearing open for the purpose of the Consolidated Capital Project Grant. Is there anyone here to speak for this program? Seeing or hearing none, is there anyone here to speak against this program? Hearing, seeing, or hearing none, I declare a public hearing closed. There's no other action the board needs to take. Thank you for coming, making this presentation. Item number three, our presenter is Ms. Becky Wehmhoff with the Stanley County Senior Services Department.
And guess what I'm here for, right? Okay. For the past three years, our department has applied for a North Carolina DOT grant that has expanded the transportation services for seniors in the county. The, the grant has, in all the three years, the grant money has been spent, which means that we are using the money. We currently are using the money mainly for transportation of seniors to dialysis and for other medical needs, and to grocery stores and to the, to nutrition sites. Actually, there's about using the money that we get, that is an average of about 500 to 700 one-way trips each month, and so it's all, it's really a win-win situation because we contract with SCUSA, which keeps the money local, too. Anyway, we are again applying for a North Carolina DOT Consolidated Capital Grant for FY19. We will continue to provide transportation for seniors. The grant we're seeking is for $60,000, and 54,000 of that's federal, 6,000 is state, and six, I'm sorry, 6,000 is local, which is 10% of the grant, and the nice thing is, is that we can use our home and community care block grant funds that fund our aging programs as a match, so there's no additional county money needed for this. So, my, I request tonight that we, after we hold the public hearing, that you approve the, for you approve us to apply for and receive this DOT Consolidated Capital Projects Grant for FY19.
Thank you, Becky. Anyone have questions for Ms. Wehmhoff? Okay, let's hold a public hearing, I declare a public hearing open, is there anyone here to speak in favor of this Consolidated Capital Project Grant? Seeing and hearing none, is there anyone here to speak against this capital grant? Consolidated capital grant? Seeing and hearing none, I declare the public hearing closed. What would the Board of Commissioners like to do?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve as requested.
Second. Got a first and two seconds. Commissioner McIntyre, I'll take Commissioner Burleson, second. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving this resolution for this grant, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Ms. Wehmhoff.
Thank you very much.
The item number four is the Central United Council of Government. Present, presenter is our county manager, Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This last item is actually from the Central United Council of Governments. There's a resolution in your packet, this is actually also related to the 5311 funding stream that folks are asking for funding for. Council of Government uses this as, they coordinate a coordinated mobility management program and coordinate a volunteer transportation system for counties in the region, and so they've gotten this grant in the past similar to our transportation, SCUSA, as well as the senior services at Monarch, and they're simply asking for county support again in their application to assist them with securing these funds to continue the mobility management and the volunteer program that they provide. Happy to answer any questions.
Any question for county manager? Don't hear any, there's no need, according to my notes here, to hold a public hearing on this one, but we do need to approve the resolution.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would make a motion, we approve the resolution for support of the Carolina, Central United Council of Government, sir.
Okay, we have a first, Commissioner Eifert, second by Vice Chairman Burleson. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. All right, we're, yeah, this is, this'll be good. The next one, the next item is the Partnership for Children, is a presentation by the executive director, Tammy Albertson. Tammy, welcome.
Thank you.
Look forward to hearing from you.
I can't hear you talk about transportation, I don't want to hear you talk about the public hearing. This is going to be challenging, I can't see far away, and I can't see. Yeah. Yeah, I do. Yep, thank you. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for inviting me and board members to present this evening on Stanley County Partnership for Children. We have been established since 1993. State legislation was established to address the problem of children coming to school unprepared to learn, and this created the Smart Start Network. From that, 75 local partnerships were established serving all 100 counties in North Carolina. Stanley County Partnership for Children was one of the first 12 partnerships established in 1993, and we'll be celebrating our 25th anniversary in 2018. We are a 501(c)(3) organization, we're governed by a 13-member board with a mission to support development of children and families through community-based programs focusing on health, family support services, and quality early education. Our target population is children birth through five. Once they enter the school system, we don't provide any services for those children. The next slide shows you some information about our budget. Our total smarts, our total budget is a little over $2.9 million, with our Smart Start budget being a little over 1.2 million, and our NC pre-K budget a little over 1.7 million. We are the contractor in Stanley County for the NC pre-K program, and during our almost 25 years here in Stanley County, we have invested over $42 million of just Smart Start funds back into our county. And this slide shows some information on the return on investment into early childhood education. The study used for this slide shows that every dollar spent towards early childhood investment, you have a return of $10.30. Of course, this varies from study to study, but this is an average, and as you can see, the return is not seen in other economic investments that often get much more attention than early childhood education does. And this was a slide that we, Chairman LaHorn and Commissioner Swain, we went to a Crib to Career Workshop several weeks ago in Kannapolis, and this is one of the slides that was shared at that meeting. And this is another slide just on the economic investment, it's saying over a 30-year period, $146 million investment in early childhood education has a $5.4 billion return. And this, just some statistical information on the early childhood population in Stanley County. Again, we're talking about children birth through five. That population is about 5.7% of the Stanley County population. We have a little over 1,300 children in licensed childcare in Stanley County, and about 2,200 not in licensed childcare. So, only about 37% of young children are in one of our 37 licensed facilities in Stanley County, and by licensed facilities, I mean childcare centers or family childcare homes. And this is pretty much on par for the state as an average. And within those 37 licensed facilities, we have approximately 337 childcare employees. This includes administrators, teachers, support staff, so it is a sizable workforce here in Stanley County. And you can see in that slide also the number of childcare centers and family childcare homes, and how they are rated through their five-star, or the light, the star licensing system in North Carolina. And this next slide just gives you a little bit of research, there's been a lot of research on brain development in the last several years around early childhood education. There are only 2,000 days between the time a child is born and when he or she enters kindergarten, so there's a lot of work to be done during that timeframe. During that time, brain is forming, creating either a strong or weak foundation for future learning. There's a quote from Harvard University neuroscientist Jack Schonkoff, and he puts it this way, "Brains are built, not born." And then another research study that I included is, is talking about military leaders call for investments in early childhood development as a matter of national security. 70% of Americans aged 17 to 24 cannot meet the military's eligibility requirements. There are three main reasons, they didn't graduate from high school, they have a criminal record, or they can't meet the physical requirements. In North Carolina, almost a quarter of high school graduates who take the Armed Forces eligibility test score too low to join. And just again, as I was mentioning, brain development, this is a great little slide, and it's just talking about the, you know, the critical stage of development during the first 2,000 days. For example, toddlers have more than 100 trillion cell connections at age two, that's the most they will ever have. Plus, by age two, the brain structure has the overall appearance of an adult brain. So, you know, if there's work to be done, it's really to be done on the early side of a child's life. A lot of focus is on K-12, and it is important, but really, the, the research is showing that brain development really occurs those earlier days. In ways we are addressing to help build those brains and having children enter school ready to succeed in life, one way is through our pre-K program. We are the pre-K contractors in Stanley County. Pre-K is a program for at-risk four-year-olds. The first qualifier is family income, and past that, there are qualifiers such as limited English proficiency, developmental disabilities, and other qualifiers. We served approximately 300 children via the NC program last school year. We have about 275 children in pre-K this year, but we'll, I'm sure we'll serve 300 this year as children come in and out of the county that qualify. And we have pre-K in 11 sites, and we have 17 classrooms of NC pre-K in Stanley County. Since we became the contractor for NC pre-K program, we have, and I think that was in 2008, we've distributed over $13 million back into the economy. So, that's not included in the, I think, 42 I mentioned earlier, that was just Smart We work closely with childcare centers in Stanley County. Again, we have 37 licensed childcare facilities, we have a quality stars program which provides a supplemental, well, provides a supplement to homes and centers based on the number of subsidized children they serve, and they can use this supplement towards teacher education, sick leave, bonus pay, insurance, and other things to support their teachers in their center or home. We provide technical assistance in childcare facilities. This just helps improve their quality, this could be some, we have staff member, the members that go in and help with room arrangement, assistance preparing a center or a home for a state visit, behavior problems, just anything that would help improve the quality of a childcare facility, we provide that assistance. We also have a early childhood resource center, which is a great resource to Stanley County. Families can join, childcare facilities can join via membership, and we have developmentally appropriate materials in the ECRC that families, centers, childcare providers can check out. It's very much like a library, and just a wealth of materials and great resources for our community and our resource center. We also offer professional development classes at our office, and this helps childcare providers increasing their knowledge, and it also helps them meeting guidelines they may have mandated by the state of North Carolina. And as you can see in the graph at the bottom, we're really proud of that graph, you can see the increase over the last 15 years of children enrolled in high-quality care in Stanley County. Some additional wages that we support children in the childcare facilities in Stanley County is through our wages program. Wages provides a wage supplement based on a teacher's education and their amount of time employed in a current facility. They have to be employed in their current facility for at least six months. This program assists childcare providers who are paid some of the lowest wages in North Carolina. 40%, 48% of childcare providers in North Carolina qualify for one or more type of public assistance based on their low wages, at a cost of 34 point, or $37.4 million to the state. In 2015, the median wage for childcare workers in North Carolina was $9.45. We served 47 childcare professionals through this program last year, and I think we directly provided a little over $52,000 to, for childcare wage supplement through the wages program last year. Through, we have a childcare health consultant program. We contract with Cabarrus Partnership for Children for this program. We contract for a registered nurse, we have her in the county for 15 hours a week, we just couldn't afford a registered nurse full-time on our own, and this nurse goes into the centers to help on their health and safety standards. And it may be teaching hand washing, or if there's some kind of outbreak within a facility, she'll go in and assist with that, it may be teaching a SIDS class, just lots of things, anything that relates to health and safety in a childcare center. We are, we do support subsidy in Stanley County. Stanley County Partnership for Children provides over $422,000 towards subsidy in Stanley County via the Department of Social Services. Subsidy is provided to qualifying families, and for our Smart Start Funds, those families must be working, seeking unemployment, or enrolled in school. Stanley County Partnership for Children paid subsidies for 153 children during fiscal year 1617, and the partnership pays for 22% of the subsidy provided in Stanley County. We also provide some funds for the administration of subsidy through Stanley County DSS also. And one thing we're really passionate about at the partnership and is growing within our county is literacy. Stanley County Partnership for Children is the contractor for the Dolly Parton Imagination Library in Stanley County. This is a program where age-appropriate books are mailed to a child's home until their fifth birthday at no cost to their families. We began the program in February of 2014. We currently have 794 children on the program, and we have graduated 506 from the program. We have put over 24,000 books into the hands of Stanley County's youngest children since April 2014. We are excited to announce we will begin the process of adding even more children to the Dolly Parton program in Stanley County this month with a goal of adding an additional 700 children by June 30th, 2018, and another 700 by June 30th, 2019. During this past legislative session, a bill co-sponsored by Representative Justin Burr in the House was approved to provide funding to make the Dolly Parton Imagination Library program statewide in North Carolina, which is going to provide us additional funding to serve Stanley County children. North Carolina will be the only second state in the United States with Dolly Parton statewide, Tennessee being the first, obviously, where the, where the program began. We believe literacy is a cornerstone for all learning, and we're beginning, we're, we are beginning two new programs related to literacy, one this month and one next month. The Raising a Reader program is a childcare-based literacy program, and the Mother Read program is geared more towards a parental group setting focusing on both on English and Spanish-speaking Any questions? I know that's a lot of information, and you have information in your packets.
Thank you for this presentation, thank you for the information you put together. Yes, sir.
I do have one question for Tammy. It may be something you can't necessarily answer, but I found it interesting, we had so many children in the pre-K program, and our school system only has one class at Indy. Why is that? Why do we not have a few more than that?
Initially, pre-K, there was many classes of pre-K in the schools setting, and they, once consolidation began and some changes with the school system, they did not have the facility or the room to provide pre-K in the, in the school setting, in the public school setting. So, we began to contract as the pre-K contractor and opened it up into private childcare centers so children could be served.
Okay.
It was, it was really a, based on a school system decision, and...
Yeah. Just to, I guess, a comment, follow-up to that, to my fellow board members, that seems interesting that, you know, we supposedly had some room in our schools, and, you know, all of a sudden, we're taking that important program and contracting that out elsewhere. It seems like if we've got the brick and mortar structures, that, that we should be doing more of that.
And that was probably in, I'm gonna look at Lori, 2008?
2007.
2007, 2008.
That started to happen around 2007, 2008.
Yeah. Part of that has to do with child care regulation. Yeah, and you know, there's, those facilities have to be licensed, just like a childcare, so you have to have, you know, there's some structural issues that go along with that also, so, yes, sir.
And then, I'm actually a board member in the partnership, and was here, and as well as Anson County, and I do know there are some actual private sector folks who wanted to be in that market of providing pre-K, and so that's, it's, it's a competition thing, too. I mean, I specifically know one in the northern end of the county who wanted to be, to offer that type of, that pre-K classroom, and actually multiple pre-K classrooms, and so part of that is just competition, and they felt like they could do it cheap, more, more efficiently, and at a better, at a, for better performance than what was being offered in other places. Part of it is school system and regulations, but part of it is just the private sector stepping up the plate, too.
It's a very competitive program. I mean, as you can see, the, the amount of money associated with it becomes, makes it very competitive in this county.
that type of, that pre-K classroom, and actually multiple pre-K classrooms. So part of that is just competition, and they felt like they could do it cheap, more efficiently, and at a better, for better performance than what was being offered in other places. So part of it is school system and regulations, and part of it is just the private sector stepping up.
It's a very competitive program. I mean, as you can see, the, the amount of money associated with it becomes, makes it very competitive in this county.
That certainly answers some of, some of my concern about that, I guess. Thank you for clarifying.
Tammy, I know that we, when, when we went on that conference, we talked about it, but just for the, the good of the board, are all the seats available in Head Start full?
In Head Start?
I get it.
Or NC pre-K?
Pre-K, I'm sorry.
Um, we're, if we're not full, we're very close right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's 100% utilized.
It starts on the school, school year, and we have a little, I mean, we add children every week. We added a little boy last week. So we, you know, especially around the holidays, we'll have five, 10 move out of the county, and we'll try to move kids right into those spots. We may have still a couple openings. You know, and it becomes, you know, if you're in Norwood, and Norwood's full, you may not want to drive to Richfield. So it becomes a geographic issue to a lot of these families who are, you know, they're at-risk families. The first qualifier is income, so they're on the lower income spectrum, so sometimes those things have an effect on where we can fill up the classrooms.
Any other questions of Tammy?
We're just right down the hall, so we'll be glad for you to come visit us or stop by if you have any questions.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Tammy, you may want to mention your fundraisers.
Fundraiser, we have Breakfast with Santa coming up in December. It's the first Saturday in December this year. We also have a play in the spring. We contract with the Children's Theater of Charlotte, and we bring in a children's play, and it's typically held at Central Elementary Auditorium. We're always, we look for sponsors for our Dolly Parton. You can sponsor a child for about $30 a year, and that'll provide a child books for a whole year. We're always looking for sponsors for that. And we're thinking of some new sponsors, some new fundraisers for 2018, as it is our 25th anniversary. So hopefully, we'll have some neat things coming up from that. I didn't mention this, but we are mandated by the state of North Carolina to have either cash matched or in kind of 19%, which is about $240-some thousand for us, which is a huge challenge. But we've, we met it this year, so we keep trying. So if you have any great fundraiser ideas, let us know.
Thank you very much. Okay, item number six is our consent agenda. I believe everyone's had plenty of time to review it. Is there any changes or additions to it, or what would the board like to do?
Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, Commissioner Burleson, do we have a second? Commissioner Morgan, seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Which brings us up to the public comments. Tonight, we did not have anyone to sign up for public comments. So let's go to board comments, and I'm gonna start with Commissioner Swain.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to take a quick second. I know we're a big agriculture county. The state fair's going on right now. This past weekend was the junior livestock shows from the county, and actually, a young man from the Millimport area was able to raise and show the Grand Champion Market hog, which, you know, that sounds, sounds kind of funny, but then when that hog went to auction, he brought home $19,500. So in the form of a scholarship, I believe it is, but I think it's Griffin Honeycutt, and if anybody knows him, he's part of the Honeycutt group out in Millimport. But I just wanted to call attention to that, and that's all I had.
Thank you. Commissioner McIntyre?
No comment.
Commissioner Lauder?
No comment, thank you.
Vice Chairman Burleson?
Just to follow up on Commissioner Swain, I was gonna mention that, and Griffin is the son of Rod and Janet Honeycutt, and he's also the nephew of our Clerk of Court, Mike Honeycutt. So shout out to Griffin and the Honeycuts for their hard work there. And also, the URA players, you know, need to give a shout out to our arts. They're doing a great job. They're actually using this room, and I encourage everyone to come out next Friday, Saturday, or Sunday afternoon, and show your support for the URA players. They're doing a great job of production of A Few Good Men, and I actually get to participate in it, I'm a juror in it. So come out and support the URA players.
Thank you. Commissioner Reiford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did want to say something before Tammy left about the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. That is a huge benefit. I've signed up some great nieces and nephews on that at birth, and they get a book a month until they're to age five, and that's a great way to put books in their hands. It's a huge benefit, so if you know any one out there that can benefit from it, surely contact Tammy. It's a, it's a great benefit. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan?
No comment.
Counselor, Ms. Burr?
No comment, sir, thank you.
Okay, thank you. County Manager?
No comment, sir, thank you.
Burke Tyler. One of these days, you're gonna surprise me and say something. I'll keep it short. You know, I like to talk about home building permits, and this is real good news, in my opinion. January through September 2017, 205 new home permits were issued for a total value of $32,490,000 compared to the same period, 144. So we've had a dramatic increase this year, and that value was $22,910,000. So home building is still going very well in this county, and it's keeping building supply houses and also subcontractors busy, which is good for our economy. And that's all I have. Our next meeting will be November the 6th at 7:00 PM here in the County Commission Room. If there's no other business, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would like a motion we adjourn, sir.
Motion and a second. Meeting adjourned.